Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to this evening's meeting of the Zoning, Planning and Development Commission of Berwyn. I know it's not only I, but several other people have been looking at these things. Could you just take a moment and put them on silent or vibrate? If we don't, I know they'll go off. So, I'd appreciate your courtesy to one another. So, Mr. Malina, would you please start the meeting this evening?
Yes, Chairman Kroska, thank you. So first, we'll take the roll. Chairman Kroska?
Here.
Mr. Bruin?
Here.
Ms. Norden?
Here.
Ms. LaPietra?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Walega?
Here.
And I am here as well, Lance Malina, member and executive secretary. We're all present, so we have a quorum. I'd ask everybody to rise and please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was October 21st, but the minutes are actually from September. And our member, Mr. Walega, pointed out that Mr. Bruin started the meeting absent, which is correct, but by the end of the meeting, where it indicated who was absent, it said "none" for the vote on the variation, although the vote itself was correct, five to one, with one absent. Under the item "absent" on page three, it has "none," and it should have Bruin there. So that's the only change that I'm aware of that came from Mr. Walega. If no one else has any changes, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes with that change, if everyone understands it.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Walega?
Second.
Mr. Miller seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. So the fact that we took a voice vote will lead to my couple comments that I want to make to start the meeting. First, this is not a meeting under the emergency measures of the Open Meetings Act. This is an open meeting, a full open meeting, under the Open Meetings Act. So people who have written in comments, they will not be read verbatim. I may try to summarize them a bit, but the public comment that will be made in person here is the public comment. All the comments were sent to the members, but they are not going to be read verbatim. The second thing to keep in mind is that although it is an open meeting, we do have some limits on occupancy. So when you are done making your comment, if you don't leave, no one else will be able to come in. So although you're obviously free to stay because you were the first one here, I'd ask that you consider leaving so that other people can come in and make their comment, if that's what they want to do. So having said that, there is no correspondence other than comments that were sent into the Commission for tonight's public hearing, so those aren't really relevant to this. There aren't any other matters of correspondence that have been received. We have no old business because we've dealt with all our pending business at our last meeting, which brings us to item seven on the agenda, which is a public hearing for ZPD-C number 21-01. It's an application request for approval of a preliminary and final plan for a special use planned development to be located within the I Industrial zoning district currently at the address commonly known as 3,000 South Ridgeland Avenue in Berwyn. The petitioner is Casper Development LLC Ridgeland, and the public hearing will be on that application. So the first thing I would ask is if we could have a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Norden?
I'll second.
Second. Ms. LaPietra? We'll take a roll call on that. Ms. Norden?
Aye.
Ms. LaPietra?
Aye.
Mr. Bruin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Walega?
Aye.
Chairman Kroska?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Public hearing is opened. So in your packets, you all received quite a bit of paperwork. There was an initial application. There was a subsequent revised application corrected, and Mr. Halsberg from the BDC has brought in yet another set that feels with basically the lot configuration, the lot sizes and the lot widths that's been tweaked again this evening. I would ask if there's a motion to make all those, the application and all those clarifications, as well as the BDC's own analysis of this application, part of the record. Is there a motion to do that?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Bruin?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, we'll take a roll call on that. Ms. Norden?
Aye.
Ms. LaPietra?
Aye.
Mr. Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Walega?
Aye.
Chairman Kroska?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. So those documents will all be made part of the record as Commission Exhibit Number Having done that, it's now at the point where we will seek testimony, both from the applicant as well as a report from the BDC, as well as public comment. Public comment can come in the form of public comment about the project, opinions and statements about the project and its worth to the city, its consistency with the zoning code and things like that. You also may have questions of the developer. I'd ask you if you have questions to ask them in addition to making your comment. Those questions will be noted by Mr. Halsberg, and then the developer or the BDC, depending on who's most appropriate, will attempt to answer those questions after the public comment is completed. So with that, everyone who thinks they will or may give testimony today, would you please rise and raise your right hand? Do you all swear or affirm to tell the truth in all testimony that you may give before this matter concerning the application before the Commission this evening?
Aye.
Thank you. You may all be seated. I would ask if we could start our evening by having the developer outline, we have all your application, but basically outline the project and what it is you're proposing there. So everyone's got a decent idea, I think, but some may not. And also explain any of the tweaks you've made, so everybody understands it.
My name is Daniel Weber. I'm the developer, I'm the attorney.
Okay, step up. And is your light green?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schievo is the manager of Casper Development LLC Ridgeland. He's here with me, he can answer the questions.
Okay. And Mr. Weber, if you wouldn't mind, the members are saying if you could lower, take your mask off now that you speak, so they can understand.
Be happy to.
We all have to run certain risks.
Yeah, that's quite all right. I'll be happy to take my mask off. Since I'm familiar with the documents, I'd be happy to discuss them with you. Essentially, it's an application for a residential development of 29 single-family homes that would involve an extension of 29th Street east to Ridgeland Avenue. It would involve two new alleyways, and the development calls for, the application calls for, excuse me, dedicating a portion of that southwest corner of the property to the school district, or to the school to the south, to be used for a parking lot. There will be alleys inside the development, the proposed development, that allows for fire safety and everything else, traffic management. There will all be sort of middle-priced, single-family homes, new construction, either detached or attached garage, two-car garages for each of the 29 homes. We made some revisions last minute, which is why we had to add them just even today, to sort of tweak some of the lot lines and widen the alleys a little bit to make sure that there was adequate room for the fire trucks and ambulances to get through. That prompted most of these minor changes that came just yesterday and today.
Okay, and my understanding is that as far as the lot width and lot area changes, those changes were made in order to make each lot in full conformity with the single-family zoning district minimum lot requirements? Is that correct?
That's correct. And to also accommodate the fire safety issues that came up. So we tried to, we had to sort of thread the needle to comply with the zoning and all the zoning requirements, but also the fire safety requirements.
Okay, you may proceed.
There's not much more to tell than that. If you have any specific questions, we're looking to, Casper does not own the property yet. He's a contract purchaser, and the entire contract is contingent upon getting zoning and PUD approval. If such approval is given, we anticipate closing in May and starting construction in June, and concentrating first on the school site to get them up and running and getting them a parking lot with a detention vault built underneath it to accommodate all the stormwater draining for that parking lot and for the entire development.
On the school part, so the land, that portion of the land that is the parking lot would ultimately be owned by the school district?
Correct.
And then the school district would give the development an easement in order to put underground stormwater detention?
Correct. No, actually, we'll build a detention first and then convey title to the school, and the easement would allow, excuse me, would allow ingress and egress for the homeowners of the new development to be able to go through the southern alley, which overlaps with the parking lot area that would be giving it.
And then who'll have the duty to maintain the underground stormwater?
There will be, excuse me, a homeowners administration for the development, and they would be required to maintain that detention vault in the future.
So the easement will cover that too?
Right. And then, as the engineer explained it to me, it's basically, the detention vault is essentially a concrete basement with drainage pipes in and out, and an access hole with a ladder into it, so you can get down and make sure that the pipes aren't clogged up and that any water that does get detained in there can drain out as required. And it requires virtually, it shouldn't require much maintenance. It should be good for 100 years with virtually no maintenance, other than inspecting it and cleaning it.
And the school district in this area is District 100, correct?
Correct.
The grade school district? And then what's the status of the discussions with the grade school district?
We're close to finalizing a contract. I just spoke with the attorneys for the school district the other day. In fact, tomorrow, I'm going to get back to them on the final drafts of our contract. They have not been executed, but there is a draft contract with some minor changes that they sent back, very minor, to which I'm going to agree. And then we have a draft easement agreement, also with some minor tweaks and minor changes that they wanted, to which we also agree. So we will have a final draft out to them, as I say, tomorrow, and then it's just a matter of executing it. And council for the school district will have to propose it to the right, to that body and to get it executed in accordance with the law.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Now you may be seated for now. I'd now ask Mr. David Halsberg, the CEO of the Berwick Development Corporation, to present on the issue of the BDC's analysis of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The developer and applicant for this property is Casper Development. Property location is at 3,000 Ridgeland here in Berwyn, Ward Four. The property is zoned I Industrial. Presently, there's a 60,000 square foot industrial building on the property with another 36,000 square foot of impervious area. The total lot size is 3.8 acres. The proposed and required setback for this development would be rezoning the property from industrial to an R1 district. The front yard requirement under code is 15-foot, corner side yard at five, interior side at three, and rear yard at 25. All of the proposed single-family homes in this revised plan meet the setback standards. You will, however, note that the plan that's been submitted is showing a 25-foot setback versus a 15-foot. There's no requirement that says they can't set the homes back a little bit further if they so choose. Really, they're trying to, at this point, sense out where the market is, whether the market would rather have a little bit of the larger front yard or a larger backyard. So that's a little bit in play, but in accordance with our code, it is in conformance with that. The comprehensive plan says that this area should be parks and open space. The approval that's being requested will be seeking the City of Berwyn's zoning recommendation for a planned unit development consisting of 29 single-family homes to be known as Ridgeland Estates at 3,000 Ridgeland Ave. here in Berwyn. The planned unit for development would need to be approved by the City of Berwyn's City Council in conjunction with four other approvals, specifically a map amendment, a comprehensive plan amendment, a development agreement, and an intergovernmental agreement with the South Berwyn School District 100. As part of the map amendment, the majority of the property would be rezoned from I to R1 single-family residential district. If approved, the triangle parcel, which is located at the southwest corner, would be transferred to the South Berwyn Middle School, South Berwyn School District 100. That would also be rezoned from I to P, which is the public areas district. The Freedom Middle School itself at 3016 Ridgeland Ave., we would do a housekeeping item in the future. That would need to be rezoned from I to, again, P, which is the public areas district.
Oh, it's never been, it wasn't rezoned?
It was never rezoned. So as we go ahead and we look at things, we always look to clean up things. So should this petition move favorably through, you can anticipate a further action of us coming back and doing housekeeping associated with the school district property. As part of the comprehensive plan amendment, the future land use map for the property will be changed from parks and open space to neighborhood residential. This use is consistent with the future land use map to the north of the property, which is also neighborhood residential. A development agreement would provide any financial terms for the project, which would be the purview of City Council and not this board. The intergovernmental agreement would be in terms of the transfer of the triangle parcel to the South Berwyn School District and any financial considerations between the governmental bodies, which again, would be a City Council issue. As I've already spoken to the existing conditions on the property, the submittals that you've received here to date represent approximately 170-plus pages of documents with still a few other plans to come before City Council that would be associated with this document. So the applicant proposes a residential development of 29 single-family homes. 27 would have detached two car garages, and two which would have attached two-car garages. There's an option that another four homes could have attached two-car garages. Lots, I believe they were 15, 19, 20, and 29. 29th Street would be extended to the east through the approximate center of the development, but lining up with 29th Street to the east. This makes sure that we're not having a difficulty with vehicles that actually wanted to go straight on 29th. So that's the best practice that's being occurred there. And the applicant will be committing that extension of 29th Street to the City of Berwyn once it's completed and meets the requirements of the city. The applicant's development plan, as previously indicated, is transferring to the South Berwyn School District a small triangle-shaped piece of property located at the southwest corner of the triangle to be used by the middle school as a parking lot. I'd like to go back in a little bit of a history. A year and a half ago, I met with the school district representatives and said, what did you want to see here developed on this property? And the school district made representations that, you know what, we're willing to work with whatever is coming forward, but what's most important to the school districts are two things. One, we don't have adequate fire protection in terms of access to three sides of the building. The true access is really at present just along Ridgeland. So when you look at what would be the south, and, excuse me, the north and the west side of the building, there's not an ability for apparatus to get into that area. The second thing the school said was, hey, we don't have really as much parking as we would like. So if there's a way to help accommodate that in a future development scheme, we want you to know to make sure that you keep your eyes on that and help us satisfy those things. That's not to say that we're going to approve a plan, but we would like you to be concerned with the needs of the school district. So I share that because I think it's very important, as we notice on this plan, as you take a look at the site plan itself on page three of the larger 11-by-17 that you have, you'll see that there is a turning radius for a fire truck to be able to come 29th Street heading west and being able to go south on an alley of 20-foot wide, making a turn, and then coming down the alley that is north to south at the west extent of the property, and then again going east, which would be then a shared access drive between the school district and this development and its homeowners accessing their garage. But what's crucial here is we're able to go ahead and get that fire protection in that location. I know Chief Hayes is here tonight, if there are questions of him, to go ahead and speak to that. So as we continue on this, the applicant would construct, under this triangle parcel, a stormwater detention vault that would be adequate for both the residential development, which would be governed by a homeowners association and manage the planned development, as well as maintain the detention vault for the future, as well as providing for detention for the parking lot that would be built above, that would contain 28 parking stalls. The applicant and the school district need to enter into an easement agreement whereby the future owners of the homes at Ridgeland would have rights of ingress and egress over and through the school driveway in order to have an unfettered 24-hour daily access to the garages and driveways located at Ridgeland Estates. And this was predominantly for those properties that are on the south side of this development along 29th Street. Those that are on the north side would have access to another existing alley that presently exists. In consideration for the donation of the parking lot parcel, the construction and future maintenance and detention vault, the school district would enter into some sort of intergovernmental agreement as well with the City of Berwyn. So as we speak about this shared arrangement of this drive, the school district indicated anything that they are involved with, with any other body, they want to be the controlling party. So they would want to have ownership of that alley, so to speak, rather than the homeowners having control of the alley and the school district, so to speak, then be the easement beneficiary. This makes sense for government purposes, that every governmental unit always prefers to have the direct control. So this relationship that's existing between the shared drive, or shared alley, as we can call it, is no different than, you can go ahead and take a look at the packet of information that we provided there with aerial photographs that show you a number of other schools. So I'll go specifically to that for this moment. So that was this particular document right here. So both the Charles E. Piper School has 38 single-family homes that access their garages through an alley adjacent to the school parking lot. The Pershing Elementary School has 20 single-family homes that access their garages through the alley adjacent to the school parking. Hayawatha Elementary has 22 single-family homes that access the garages through the alley adjacent to the school parking. And further, Emerson Elementary, Irving Elementary, and Kaminsky Elementary all have alleys adjacent with single-family homes associated to them as well. So I offer that to you, that this is not something unique. This is not something different. In fact, it's something fairly common that we have in our community, as a dense, built-out community. Let's remember, we are the most dense township in the state of Illinois presently, so we are in very much an urban environment and trying to address the needs of the community within that urban setting. So the approvals that are required are six. First here, coming before you for action, is a recommendation for approval of a planned unit development, which then would go to City Council upon your recommendation, approval of the map amendment, approval of a comprehensive plan amendment, approval of a development agreement, improvement of an easement agreement, which would be for the Berwyn School District, and approval of an intergovernmental agreement, if necessary, between the City Council, being the City of Berwyn, and School District 100. The Building Division has taken a look at this development, as well as the Fire Department. The Fire Department notes that all the homes are going to be sprinkled. There will be fire hydrants meeting all of our code requirements, installed pursuant to the fire chief and the Public Works Director. Public Works has indicated that rather than have the trees, every 25-foot, Berwyn requires a tree to be planted along the right-of-way, but what we have found is there's not adequate land area pursuant to the way the code is written to put that street tree between the curb, the back of curb, and the sidewalk. What typically ends up happening is the trees mature, and then we have the curbs that get busted up by the overgrowth of the trees or the sidewalks. So the recommendation by the Public Works Director is saying, let's put those trees on private property and let the homeowners enjoy them and benefit from them in that way. Other comments that the Public Works Department does have is that the street would be a two-way street with parking on one side of the street, which would be the south side of the street. From an economic development planning point of view, as we look at the zoning and the land use, to the north, it's R1 and C1. It's a single-family residential district, as well as a neighborhood mixed-use district. To the south is industrial, which is the school, so I sort of highlight that. It's really not. It's more of a public areas district. The area to the east is a neighborhood mixed-use district and industrial. And then to the west, we have a public areas district, and that's our baseball area. So in terms of the comprehensive plan, looking to make this change in the comp plan from parks and open space, making this change, as we look at what are the most appropriate land uses, clearly industrial is not an appropriate land use next to the school, next to the residential homes, or the ballpark. While this property hasn't been on the market for a number of years, and governmental units and others have looked at it, no one has else come forward with a plan. We have met with folks talking about affordable housing for seniors at this location. However, the market just couldn't bear the subsidies, et cetera, necessary to build that kind of development. This is a market rate development. The plans call for roughly 3,000 square foot homes. That's when you count the English basement that are designed as part of this project. They're very nice in terms of the aesthetics. You have copies of those plans in that 170-page packet. So changing the comp plan and redesignating the parcels would be appropriate. I've provided a land use map and a future land use map as part of my report to you. We've also demonstrated the future housing map and the modification that we would make to it. As we look at the zoning ordinance and requirements associated with this development, I'm not sure what that noise is.
Yeah, can we turn that off?
Thank you. So the proposal is per code as it relates to all of the bulk requirements provided in the city. I will make a change here. The minimum lot area is 3,750 square feet, not 3,700 square foot, as the report indicates. I guess I had a fat thumb, so my apologies there. All of the lots meet the 30-foot width requirements. You will notice on the plan, I think it's Lot 29. Lot 29, if you look at the frontage of it, it includes a little easement area for ingress and egress. We have a unique situation in our code. Most zoning codes in other communities, if you have a ready I turn and you're looking to go ahead and measure the front yard width, you typically would go to the building setback and measure at that location. However, our code doesn't make that provision. So in order to address that within the code, what we'll be doing, and what is proposed, is to keep the lot frontage at 30-foot and give a small little sliver of easement to the city so that we can pave that area. So that when you look at the third page of this document here, you will notice the turning template movements for a fire truck to be able to access around the building, around the development. And so we provide the same, just for clarity for you. I've also provided a zoning map to make the reflections, so that you can see the representations that have been made are true and accurate. The findings and recommendations that we have before you for this evening is that we find that the project has been determined, that the information presented has been affirmed, and that the standards for our planned use development have been based on the considerations that we- that we recommend at this point, that the city of Berwyn zoning board approve the aforementioned planned unit development plan, that the approval be subject to certain criteria that are identified there. I'm not going to go through those points, they're ones duplicative of what I've spoken to you already. And at this point, that would close my representations, however, I'll be happy to come back and do Q and A responses. We have provided already a significant list of questions that are out there that we've seen in the public and have written responses to offer into the record as well.
So if we could just clarify, Mr. Helsberg, before any questions are asked of you, just so I can clarify, the way I read the code, the only issue before this commission tonight is the appropriateness of a planned unit development for this site, correct?
That is correct.
And this application is both for a preliminary and a final planned unit development, it's a combined application?
That is correct.
And that is something that this commission has considered before on the development, I think, on Ridgeland Avenue of its south. But that's the only issue. So the way I read the code, the MAP amendment, even the MAP amendment, isn't before us jurisdictionally. Those are things handled, the public hearing for that, everything will happen at the city council, so that if we find the standards of the planned unit development met by this application, we should recommend approval if we find it met, but we can condition that recommendation saying, assuming these other things the city council does, because obviously a planned unit development would not be appropriate if the council decides not to rezone the property from I to R.
That would be correct.
Am I correct? So as I read the recommendation, then, it's really only the PUD that's before us?
That is also correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what we'll do now is we'll move to public comment and combine those with any questions that the public may have of either the applicant, or in general, or Mr. Helsberg from the BDC. We'd like you to raise your hand, and I'll call on people, and then you can step up and have at it. So we'll start. Okay, I see a hand there. Ma'am, would you step up? Wait, please, we got a mic here. So this is being livestreamed, so make sure that all the comments are made in the mic. So, thank you.
Okay, so I mostly just have a couple of questions.
Okay, first, who are you?
Oh, my name's Beverly Stewart.
Stewart?
S-T-E-W-A-R-T.
Thank you. Thank you, okay, so questions?
So, the question I have is, do you guys have a total cost of this project?
Okay, that's a question?
Okay, the next is, is this going to be funded a hundred percent through TIF money?
Oh, and let me make a comment that I forgot to make. Another thing that this commission has no jurisdiction or say over is the TIF. The zoning commission is not involved in the creation of a TIF, the administration of a TIF, or the closing out of a TIF. We have no jurisdiction over any redevelopment agreement that the city may make with the developer.
Do you know the answers, though?
I don't know the answer to anything, you're, you know, except who I am, basically.
Okay, well, these are the questions, you can decide to answer them, it's not meant to create responsibility overall, except to know what it is so we know what's really happening.
Okay, I just wanted to make that point.
That's fine. Okay, so if there's a TIF money involved, then the next question is, is there any money in the TIF to offset this? Is there an agreement at all about what the developer pays and what Berwyn pays? Do you anticipate that property taxes in the surrounding area will increase? What's the average cost of the house in this homeowners' association? And as a matter of public comment, I really disagree with the idea of turning something residential that was meant to be open space and parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next person. And again, wait till you get up to the mic to talk, and give us your name, and then you can let us know.
Sure. Hi, my name's Corina Lopez, K-O-R-Y-N-N-A, Lopez, L-O-P-E-Z, and I did submit a comment by email, so forgive if this is, forgiving if this is a little bit scattered, since this is just from notes here. I just wanted to pull up some things that were shared by the BDC, I'm sorry, opposed to me? Dave. When mentioning the fact that this is already one of the most dense townships in the state, I think that highlights the importance of the fact that this is adding more density to the area. And I appreciate that there was some discussion amongst government tables, like the school board, but I think that shows the lack of engagement with community members, and I understand that government officials on those boards are representatives of community members, but I really believe that the city and its residents can be partners and stronger partners in this process, and really be creative in terms of what we do with our spaces here, and of course, my phone box, so. So I also wanted to say that the fact that the shared alley is not a unique thing to Berwyn, I kind of raised that uniqueness to the fact that we need something unique in the city, but also that that shared alley and the new street creates problems for students. And in talking to residents near that site, they're already concerned about student safety when crossing that area and the lack of disrespect for students and crossing guards. And I also want to just point out that there not being enough space for trees is a problem of their own making. If there was a different kind of layout, there could be some space for trees possibly. So I think just thinking about those priorities. I'm also concerned with the fact that it's a market rate development, also a decision that was made. I know that some folks were interested in some senior homes or other opportunities for individuals, and I understand if folks see that that's not possible, but I think that affordable housing is a possibility to add and consider in this. And then just again, from residents that we spoke to over the weekend in that area that would be neighbors to the site, they really worry about the possibility of an increase in taxes being levied against them from the school district. We know that, I understand that the school district isn't saying that they would do that definitely, but they would have the opportunity to do so, and residents who primarily did not know about this development and who were learning about it from fellow neighbors, they had a lot of real concerns, and I think that just goes back to the point that more community members should be a part of any kind of development process, and I know that's beyond this table and something more for the city, but I just wanted to share that. And I also just had a question about what happens if houses don't sell or sit on the market for really long times. Thank you.
Thank you, next person. It's easier for everybody to understand, but don't feel like you're compelled to do it if you don't want to.
No problem. I just want to thank you all for holding this space today and giving everybody the chance to share their public comment. My name is Rob Pavone, I'm a fifth ward resident, and I'm here today to talk a little bit about why I oppose this development project. Berwyn is a diverse community of mixed incomes and backgrounds. If we want our community to remain diverse and vibrant, we must make decisions that protect our working class and low-income families. Berwyn does not need more housing development that excludes the majority of people who live in the area already. Now, it's to my knowledge that these homes would cost four hundred thousand dollars to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Without any percentage of the homes being affordable, this is a detriment to our community and to the folks who live here. Most folks who live here could not afford to purchase these homes, so people that already live in Berwyn probably could not afford to live in these homes. Now, this is a strong opinion, but it is an opinion, and I can share my opinions today. To me, this is city-sponsored gentrification in the middle of a pandemic, and the taxpayers are fronting the bill. It's not a secret that I don't support TIFs, but if we are going to use them for development, we should be supporting projects to bring community resources, jobs, and services to our community. Another problem with this entire process is that the community engagement is completely missing from the proposals. The community wants to know where their tax dollars are being used, they want to say how they can build, they want to say how they can build a stronger, more vibrant Berwyn. Instead of our opinions being listened to, we're always the last to know about what's going on. I've door-knocked for several weeks now, and community members in the surrounding area want transparency from their local government, they want to be involved in these types of decisions, and they want to feel like they're empowered as residents of our neighborhood. That is all I would like to share today. Thank you for the time that you all are spending listening to us, and I appreciate everybody that came out today to speak up. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, there's a hand there. And maybe if people don't, are you gonna?
There are eight out there still waiting.
Yeah, so maybe, can I make a suggestion? If people don't want to leave, leave, maybe you could trade places with some people where you could still sort of hear what's going on and let some other people in? Just a thought. Okay, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Marisol Brambila, I'm a resident of the sixth ward here in Berwyn, and I'm here tonight to voice my opposition to the Ridgeland development and the TIFs it's building upon. I would like to first start by saying thank you to our alderman-elect, Mr. Rob Pavone, for hosting a listening session for residents last week, I believe, where explanations on what TIFs are and how they work was shared. That is the kind of information that I hope to get from my city and not a private citizen. It was very educational, and I still don't understand TIFs very well, so there's a lot more that I need to learn. But from what I can gather, and from what I've heard today and what I've heard over the last week, is that I don't believe this is a good project. I don't believe this is a project that's going to make my city a better place, I don't believe it's going to make it more welcoming to people like me with incomes like me. And like it was mentioned already before, we are a highly dense city. We can barely take care of our residents through this pandemic. We're not even getting them vaccinated the way we should. What's going to happen when we increase the amount of residents that we have drastically when we don't have the infrastructure to care for them? You're talking about these alleys, are they going to have preference when it's time to clear the snow, or are the residents going to be in danger when these snows are full of snow and the fire trucks can't get through? It seems like it's being rushed, and it seems like it's being built to make profit, not to increase the quality of life of our residents, not to make things more affordable for our residents, not to make things healthier for our residents. It seems like what is being prioritized is the money that people will get out of this and not the well-being of my community. And that really, really concerns me, that this tax money is not going to go back to our schools and to our city over twenty-some years, and that TIFs can be extended past their lifetime is also very scary. We see what happens when taxes go up and up. We know who's going to leave, and that's what I don't want to see. I want to keep my neighbors, whatever their age, whatever their income, and I want to welcome other families too, regardless of what their income is. That's not going to happen with this development. And I hope that the well-being of our community is really, really taking into account when deciding these kind of projects. And like Pavone said, community needs to be involved from the beginning, not catching up when things are getting ready to finalize, and we're all rushing to figure out what a TIF is because we're busy with our lives in the middle of a pandemic. So I hope that the city starts doing a much, much better job informing our residents of what is happening here and how our tax money is being spent. And I put that on the new elected people, the old elected people, and yeah, just involve the community, give us the information that we need in a way that is accessible to us. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, next, sir, you in the back?
Good evening, my name is Gerardo Mendez.
Sorry.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, tell us your name one more time.
My name is Gerardo Mendez.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention, I'm a product of Freedom Middle School, and I know that all of these plans sound really interesting, really cool, in particular for the emergency, but it's very concerning how you guys plan on doing this, especially for the, what does this mean for the neighboring citizens? Another issue that I have is, growing up, there was always parks to play in, but then suddenly, as I started to grow up a little bit more and more, I noticed that, say, Gennara Park, it's fenced up. So now the only place that kids can actually go to within this local region is, say, baseball alley. So now you guys want to cut down baseball alley two, minimize it, and make it into public homes? And the third issue that I have is that, it's very interesting that you guys mentioned that you guys are going to make parking spaces for Freedom Middle School, which is fine, but what about those, what about that Twenty-Ninth Street? What about those twenty-nine single homes? Does that mean that they're going to have, are you guys assuming that there's only going to be one car per family, per house? Because I live on Twenty-Eighth Place, and it's already an issue finding parking spot as it is already. Sometimes I have to park two, three blocks away. Does that mean that those families, those houses are going to start parking on Twenty-Eighth Place? Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Okay.
Hi, good evening. I'm Nicola Penyeranda, that's N-I-C-O-L-E-T-T-E, Penyeranda, P-E-N-Y-A-R-A-N-D-A. I'm a resident of the first ward. I want to say again, thank you for allowing us to have this public forum, to have a conversation about this. I am pretty much not in favor of this, and in particular, it's around the finances. And I recognize that this is around zoning, and I think all of these kind of intersect because essentially, you will have a lot of say in whether or not this even goes forward. But considering that this is a TIF district, and from my understanding of TIFs is that that money doesn't actually go back into the community. And so what we are essentially voting on is whether or not we want to defund Berwyn. I bring this up with the assumption, and I recognize it's an assumption, when I hear middle-priced housing, that these houses would be around four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm also going to make the assumption that taxes would be about fourteen thousand dollars a year. Now, based on my understanding of TIF, that means that pretty much none of that would go back on an annual basis, and let's say that there's a two percent increase over the next twenty-two years, it's a whole lot of money, right? However, I do recognize that the Berwyn Development Corporation did make a statement that twenty-seven percent would go back into D-100, I want to say thirteen percent would go to D-201, and two percent would go to the Berwyn Library. These numbers sound really great when you're hearing no money's going to go back into the city. However, right now, our property taxes in South Berwyn are divided as thirty-one percent going to D-100, twenty-one percent going to D-201, and then three percent going to the Berwyn Library Fund. It's also important for us to recognize that about twenty-nine percent of our property taxes are supposed to go to the city of Berwyn, and we also know that the city of Berwyn prioritizes about thirty-five percent on that funding to public safety. So what happens if we allow for this TIF to go forward through y'all approving this be transitioning through the zoning? Well, let's talk about that. So what this would mean is that in one year, the projected annual loss in tax revenue for twenty-nine homes for D-100 would be a loss of over sixteen thousand dollars. For D-201, it would be a loss of over thirty-two thousand dollars. For Berwyn Public Library, a loss of over four thousand dollars. However, for the city of Berwyn, it would be a loss of about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. For public safety, forty, over forty-one thousand dollars, and for Berwyn Township, over eight thousand dollars. Now, let's keep going forward with that. What happens over twenty-two years? What do we lose? D-100 would lose over four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. D-201 would lose over eight hundred and eighty, I'm sorry, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Berwyn Public Library, which is doing the hard work right now of keeping our kids entertained and supported through this pandemic, would lose over a hundred thousand dollars. The city of Berwyn, which has a debt, I believe, of three hundred and thirty million, roughly? Okay. They would lose over three million dollars. Public safety- and supported through this pandemic, would lose over $100,000. The City of Berwyn, which has a debt, I believe, of 330 million, roughly? Okay. They would lose over $3 million. Public Safety would lose over $1 million, and the Berwyn Township would lose over $220,000. A total over the course of 22 years of $6 million, $1,654.23. I don't think we should be voting to defund our city. And that's exactly what happens if we promote something like this in our community. I've heard a lot of different conversations on what it means for us to have green spaces, how important it is to consider that our community presently is very densely populated, and we recognize that density, considering that right now, we do have still very high rates of COVID because of mixed, um, mixed generational housing, because of our amount of essential workers, and we're also seeing that our response to a lot of this is struggling as a city. And so my hope would be that if we're going to use this for any kind of development, that the development that would happen here in the 3,000 block, or the 30,000 block of Ridgeland, would be something that can be better used to our community, something that can better support our neighbors, and not just importing wealth. And it would be temporary, considering that we would be taking away funds to support the city to make it better for our present residents and future residents. And so I humbly urge y'all to really consider these things and what our neighbors are saying and what we want to see happen, um, when you're making decisions around zoning, because we do recognize that y'all's vote will have a longer impact on how we handle this situation, and this situation being this development. So I very much appreciate your time, and I really hope you consider our, our woes.
Next, gentleman in the back.
Hello, my name is Mario Lopez. Um, first, I want to thank, uh, the chairman and, uh, board members here for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, when I got brought, uh, attention to this development, I, I, I saw some pros and I saw some cons to it, to be honest with you. I think the public works person here did a lot of, you know, great job kind of talking a lot of, about a lot of the concerns that I had, but I used to work for an elected official in Chicago doing zoning, and so I have a couple of questions in regard to just this process. I'm not going to sit here and talk about, you know, the TIF funds and, you know, how the money was spent, because quite frankly, I don't agree that it should be spent on something like this, or should even be considered. Um, how does the zoning, uh, process here work in Berwyn? So, um, is it, does the city council approve the zoning requirements here, um, or any upzoning or downzoning of buildings or an area or lots, right? Um, and if so, what does, uh, it look like in terms of notifying the public, right? Like, is it just a simple, you know, making sure you meet the Freedom of Information, Freedom of Information Act, right, or not for you, Open Meetings Act, right, and just posting it online? Or like, how proactive is the city in terms of communicating to its residents about zoning changes, especially big ones happening in their community?
That's a question, go ahead.
Yeah, and so that's, I think that's one of my biggest questions that I have, right, and one of my criticisms, and I hope hopefully the board would continue later, uh, to hopefully change this process and just communicate with the residents a little bit better, um, about the changes that are really happening. In regards to this, like, I, I've, I've, I've worked for officials that have used TIF properly and have used TIF, uh, you know, to, to benefit the community. I, when I took a look at this, I, I was very disappointed at the fact that, like, you know, uh, people were, people were supportive of this, and I'm incredibly more disappointed in the fact that District 100, um, you know, uh, is, is, is kind of agreeing to go along with this, and, and, you know, I, I, I hope that, you know, they, they do their due diligence, um, further, and really kind of talk, uh, you know, to the residents as well, because the school is part of the community. Um, the school isn't just insular, right? Like, it, the neighbors have to deal with the traffic that the school brings, right? The neighbors have to, to deal with a lot of the, the issues that the school generates, and not issues, right, but like, a lot of the, the, the things, right? So, um, I think that's really all I have. Again, I want to thank the board and the chairman as well, but I do, would like, uh, in the future for, uh, the board to consider, uh, other ways of kind of communicating and hopefully, you know, expanding on the communications to its residents on zoning changes. Thank you.
Next. You're coming up? Okay.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
I'd like to ta- talk about the, that project everyone's talking about here. My name is Domingo Ramirez, okay? I had two, uh, daughters go to Freedom, okay? For, for, I had, they're two years apart, so for years, I've been complaining that the kids don't have no drop-off, no, uh, designated drop-off areas. For years, I've been telling Bob Faye, why don't we eminent domain the property to the, uh, north of the school and use that for proper parking? So the kids could have somewhere they could run around, a basketball court, a, a field or something for them kids to have somewhere to run around when it's hot out. Yous decided, Berwyn decided to put that school across the street from a trucking firm next to that factory when that factory was in, in, in operation. Yous decided to put it there. That's a high-traffic area. I had, I always complained to Bob, I called the police department, the guy in charge of the parking enforcement, there was no drop-off points when it's snowing, raining, and with, weather's terrible. You know, there's nowhere to drop off the kids, we're, rally, you can't park here. So I called the police department person, the commander in charge of the parking enforcement people, and told them, hey, what's up with this? We got, we getting, we need a designated area. Berwyn should have thought this out a little better. Across the street, there's an area where we can make a designated lane for the parents to drop off, impeding that, uh, across the street from that trucking firm, there's about eight feet of usable space there. Come up with a resolution to have the drop-off points for the families, okay? In my opinion, that school, I mean, that lot right there should be designated for a parking spot, a, a playground of some sort for the kids. I don't know who decided to come up with this development. What I feel a hundred percent feel, and everybody can hear me, we need to have a referendum. When, big things like this, we need to have a referendum. If any of yous guys have, have an elected seat, all the people in Berwyn behind me, we need to come out and vote. We vote people out of office, and we'll make changes. You know what I mean? You're, you're trying to bring in big development, you, right next to a school that has barely a, a spot to park our teachers. Those are great teachers from Hiwata to Freedom. None but respect to the teachers. They go way beyond their ways to treat our kids and teach our kids. They stay late after school programs and stuff, and yous got the audacity to want to build right there and not help the teachers? You're going to give them a little, a little, extra spot to park? That whole spot right there should be designated to that school. When you invest in the, in the schools, you invest in the communities. When yous wanted more money and you had a referendum, I voted to give more money, because I believe in you invest in the schools, you're investing in the communities. You know what I mean? And shame on yous if yous are going along with this. Yous of all people should know that this, this school needs added space. You know what I mean? For years, I told Bob Faye, let's eminent domain this, oh, it costs 2.5 million. Well, 2.5 million to a $300 million debt that these people have, has the residents in is a drop in the bucket. You know what I mean? I'm so upset with yous guys right now. Yous are District 100, supposed to be representing the school system, and you're allowing this to happen? You know what I mean? I'm, I'm, I'm upset, and my kids don't go there no more, but I could relate to the families that are going, dropping off their kids. I could relate to what they're dealing with right now, because they're dealing with the same thing I was dealing with. You put in a school in a high-traffic area across the street from a firm and that factory. You didn't even think about where, where the families are going to drop off the kids? Them kids don't have nowhere to stretch. With COVID and everything, they need, I mean, if you're going to do something, do something for the community. You putting a parking lot there, a nice area for the kids to go out there and run around, play basketball, a track or something? You're investing in the community. And, and whoever could hear me, if these, any, any of yous guys have elected seat, I am here to tell you, we're going to come out to vote. No more under 20% voter turnout. When we start 40, 50%, we'll make changes. You know what I mean? We need to come up and vote. That's how we make changes. Otherwise, they're going to keep doing this. There should not be no decisions made like this regarding us and our taxes. Our taxes keep Berwyn running. Let's not, let's be clear on that. Everybody in front of me are fun, are, are paid by the taxpayer. You know what I mean? So give us, we, we deserve the right to be heard. It should be a referendum. Ask us the question, do you want this property to go to the school, or do you want development? Most of these people behind me are probably saying for the school. You know what I mean? And I don't have no, no, my kids ain't there no more, but this is my community. I'd rather see something for the school than a high, uh, you know, all these houses going up right there. Where are all those people going to park? What are you going to do about the flow of traffic? I just want yous to look in the mirror and reflect. You know what I mean? Because we're not going to sit there and stay dormant no more. I guarantee you, we're going to come out to vote, and we're going to remember what happens today. I ask yous to put a break on this, step back for a minute and rethink all this, because we will come out to vote. That's the power we have. Ain't no one have more power than the voter. Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Rhonda Mahia, and I'm a resident of the fifth ward. Um, I think it's an understatement to say that residents, um, obviously feel that this is not in the best interest for the community, specifically the school and the surrounding areas. Uh, one question that I do have is, how will the B, uh, DC ensure that the surrounding residents are not displaced from this development? And with that in mind, developmental, is, uh, development is often a code for making the community a more appealing place to attract more affluent white people. Why are we investing, why, why are we invested in inviting people and not supporting the very people who already live here? I ask that you guys, uh, keep this in mind as you make your decision about this development. The language in this project is very problematic. Our community is developing, and it will happen by the very people of this community. Deny the TIF. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, there's someone, yeah, so, I didn't see you, sorry. It was, yeah, thank you for pointing that out.
Hi, my name is Celia Loza, C-E-L-I-A, Loza, L-Z-A. And as I find out that this is going on right there next, next to almost where I live, I live in 283 Ridgeland. Uh, once, once, uh, the Freedom School was built, it became a lot of hassle with traffic. When I bought my house, my house never had a garage, so I always struggling with parking. When I come in from work after school, or, or when a school is, uh, during school hours, I have to park three, four, five blocks away. The park for the kids, Yanura Park, we paying for, for Yanura Park with our taxes, and that, that park is faced, uh, it's, is with fence. To me, it's like private, it's privatized. Why is privatized where our kids are going to go play? I mean, I don't have no more kids. My, my baby is 27 years old, but when I see other kids and I say, where our tax money is going to privatize the park for the kids instead of leaving the kids, the park open for kids to come and play instead of, uh, probably privatizing the, the park for kids to come and play for, uh, the families that have kids? Why can't they build something more educational for sports after school or during the school next to the Freedom School? Like other, somebody else was saying, and it's true, it's snowing, during the snowing cleaning, it is not, not even the city comes and clean the way it should, it should, it should, it's supposed to. We all struggling, we're all just now in, on, on, um, on, uh, Ridgeland Avenue. We don't, we need the help from the city, we don't have the help, the help from the city. Building all these houses right next to, almost right next to me, what is going to happen? It's true, they're going to build two-car garage, but a lot of times, that person is not going to have only two cars. Who promised you that a person is only have only two or three or four cars, and they're going to be parking in the street? We are already and the neighbor struggling looking for parking, and it's not only me. We complain right there when, when we see each other. I have to park three blocks away and somewhere in the, in the other, in the, on the other side of the neighborhood. In the neighborhood. It is not right. I think you guys need to come out with a better idea what to build, what, what needs to be built right there next to the school. Like I say, I have no more kids, but it's more kids from the neighbors. You guys have to think on what's the better, better things to build for, for Berwyn's families, low-income families. I seen you guys rebuilding, uh, houses, put them on the market for $500,000, $600,000, $450,000. What is going to happen to Berwyn? Low-income people, what are we going to do? Do we have to run away because rich people is coming and leaving right there next to Freedom School? I think we need to decide and, and building, and build something better for our community, for Berwyn, for the city of Berwyn. I've been living in Berwyn for almost 20, 30 years. I love Berwyn, but the way things are going right now, I'm ready to move out, just because. It's people calling me, sending me text to text, I buy your house, yeah, you want to buy my house to rebuild it, renew it, and then, and sell it for what? You giving me a pieces of, pieces of bread right now for my house, and you're going to sell it for nuts, for donuts? Renew it, rebuild it, and sell, sell it for $500,000? I don't think so. I love Berwyn. I'm happy on Berwyn. We need something better on Berwyn, not more expensive houses. The only, my, only people, rich people is going to come and buy it, because my son is not going to afford to buy a five, $400,000, $1,000 house, because they still paying college. I not agree with this thing right here.
Thank you. Yes.
Um, hi, my name is Maria Martinez. I'm a youth in the community, and I really just want to echo what the previous speakers have said, how much strongly I oppose these TIFs. Um, the development, I, as a youth in the community, I feel like that space could better be used as a community area for the kids, especially those in the fourth ward. Uh, we don't need homes. Um, so my question is, would the city consider going through a racial equity impact assessment to discover the ways, um, this development will hurt people of color? And I know, um, some city council members are here, and I highly, I really encourage you guys to vote no on this development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Kratska, Mr. Malina, commissioners. Hi. Uh, my name is Janine Riordan, and I wear several hats at this current moment. I am the third ward alderman. I will try to save those questions for later. But I'm also a resident here in Berwyn, and so I have a couple of questions that are influenced by all the hats that I wear. Traffic is a pretty big deal here, and I'm, I am concerned about the traffic patterns of adding 29 to 58 cars, vehicles into this fairly congested area. And zoning matters when we make those decisions. Parking. One of the chief concerns in my ward, which is different than this ward, is parking. The reality is there's not enough. I heard Mr. Hulstberg say that parking will be allowed on the south side of the street, and so there'll be adequate ease, um, uh, traffic pattern for that. However, we don't just have one friend come visit us, we have six or seven or eight, and where are those cars going to go? While it's an industrial area, we don't care. They go to the parking lot. But as we trim that down, those cars will go somewhere, and they will impact the entire neighborhood, not just 29th Street. I heard you very clearly that this is, you don't have any authority over the TIF. I honor that. You do have a You do have authority over adhering to the ordinance for the business, the building code.
Not the building code, the zoning code.
Forgive me. Thank you. We have 65% impervious requirement in our code. I know that at least two of these properties don't meet that. So that will be one of the things that gets a variance. Is it incorrect? The 65 is incorrect? Or the 13 and 14 are substantially bigger than the law? I have one here, you can. 13 and 14? Are you telling me that the surrounding area is 35%? So this isn't, this isn't actually representative of what's planned to be built here? It's just a guesstimation of what could be built?
Also, it's not a zoning matter. Though, the footprint of the building is ultimately confirmed at the building permit level. So if the impervious surface is too big, the permit won't be granted. It has nothing to do with our job.
So I often come before you around variances. And, thank you. Muck that up. I'll muck that up later. There's 29 homes here. There's going to be 29, 58 toilets, 29 washing machines. Our infrastructure in Berwyn is inadequate. We have 90 to 100-year-old sewers. The storm, the storm drain and our sewers are combined. We have a huge water problem. I understand that the small property in the corner is going to retain some of the storm sewer, but it won't retain all of it. That will flush downstream. Pardon my euphemism. And I ask you, as you're considering whether this is a viable property here, it, at some point, this industrial property is good as an industrial property. Is it good for 29 new homes on our infrastructure? There'll be some recreation here. There's going to be some work in the Depot District. But it will not be adequate to solve the problems that are coming through this area and leaving from this area. And I'm deeply concerned about that. As you all consider whether or not this is, and I'm sorry, Mr. Malina, I didn't entirely catch what the strict parameters that you would be deciding.
It's the planned unit development standards.
I would hope, as you consider that, you also consider what the impact on our city is. And you will make a decision that will come to City Council, and it will say either recommended by the commission or not recommended by the commission. Your recommendation holds an amazing amount of weight and often overshadows whatever discussions we might have in City Council. I ask you, if you have concerns about this, do not vote for it. If you have concerns about this, do not move it beyond you. It will come before us with your recommendation or not recommendation. But if you're concerned, please, exercise your vote and your decision based on what you think is best for who Berwyn is. My concern is, we are the most densely populated city in Illinois. This doesn't address that in any way. It does not bring us more commercial income. It does not move us into a leverageable position for jobs. It constrains us in our sewers, our water supplies, and our traffic, parking included. So, please, continue to do what you've always done. I appreciate you. I'm always glad that you let me talk. And I hope that we can come to a better Berwyn together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker? Okay, if there are no other speakers, I'd like Mr. Hulseburg to, however you want to do it, Dave, if you think Mr. Weber, whoever wants to address these questions.
Well, maybe we'll take a look at the questions.
Okay. And then after those, after the testimony about the answers to questions from the public, then we'll open it up to questions by commission members as part of the public hearing.
The first question that we recorded was, do we have a total cost for the project? I would refer that to the developer. Don't have the total cost of all the home construction, but I can tell you what the public improvements would be. Meaning all the grading of the land, extending, constructing the alleys, constructing 29th Street, all the site preparation work and stuff. Is right, estimated about $1.9 million.
$1.9 million.
Yeah, and that doesn't include building a home.
Right.
Each home would be different. And these are, would fluctuate according to market conditions and what they think they can sell.
Thank you.
The second question was asked, is this going to be funded 100% by the TIF? The answer would be definitively not. There has yet to be a agreement worked out between the city. Even a preliminary agreement worked out with the city has not occurred, talking about any components that would be provided for by the TIF as an expense. Some of the things that have been mentioned that could be eligible at TIF expenses could be the value of the triangle piece of property that would be deeded over, the stormwater detention portion that is being benefited by the school district, the parking lot that's going over that area benefiting the school district, the sidewalk that is on the baseball park that's sought to be constructed, that could be an eligible TIF expense. The redoing of the alley to the north might be something that could be done out of the TIF. But none of these things have been approved nor even brought forward to the city for consideration at this time.
And in fact, those items are independent of the zoning.
That is absolutely correct. I'm just, in fairness, I'm trying to answer some of the questions that residents took the time to come out this evening to ask and to the best of my ability to share responses because I do think that they're deserving of that. And so that's why I'll share. While it's not within your purview, I hope you would give me the benefit to go ahead and continue to express some of those things.
No, I understand. And just so the public understands, it's also not appropriate from a zoning perspective to make the issue of whether zoning requirements were met conditioned on the payment of certain funds for TIF. It's called contract zoning and it's illegal. Go ahead.
So the third question, is there TIF money involved? If there is TIF money involved, is there any money right now to cover any expenses? No, this TIF has not created any increment yet. There is $0 in the TIF at present to go ahead and fund anything. The, the city council has approved a program called Pay As You Go TIF, which says if you create some increment, there may be some ability for you to get some dollars back. But again, that's not a guarantee that that would ever occur. There is a policy that's been established. Is there an agreement between parties? Well, there's no agreement. I mean, while the school district has entertained and attorneys are talking, that is not a done deal. I am not going to go ahead and represent the school district at saying that they're in favor of this development. What we are saying is if the school district is, that has to happen. This development cannot happen without that agreement in place.
And that's why the BDC is recommending that any PUD approval, if the commission feels the standards have been met, would be, the recommendation would be that it would be conditioned on an appropriate agreement being reached between the school district and the city.
Correct.
Is that correct? And between the rezoning being found appropriate by the city.
Correct.
And that the city finding that the subdivision plat that's being proposed is appropriate because that also isn't within our purview. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I understand.
So the next question was, do you anticipate taxes will go up for other houses? I can't speak what other house values are going to be going up, what the assessor will do to it. Yes, these homes have been represented to be about $400,000 and potentially with other upgrades going higher than that. I did a quick Google on Realtor.com as I was sitting there. I found that there are more than 17 homes right now in the community, over $400,000 for sale. So we don't have a lot of homes at what we call that higher run housing ladder. But I will say this. I think it's important for every community to have every rung on the housing ladder represented so that residents do have the opportunity to stay within their community rather than have to go ahead and move to another community just because they want to upgrade or downgrade their housing situation. So that would be a response to that. Do you think the, what do you think the average house or the home is? I've spoken to that. What happens if houses don't sell or sit on the market? This developer is not going to go ahead and build 29 houses at once. No developer will do that. No bank will allow them to do that. They will put up a couple model homes to begin with, and they will only start building additional houses beyond that as they have sales. Their banker is going to require that contract in order to take that next step with the development. So as we do any sort of analysis on something like this from a financial perspective, we would typically say, okay, let's go on a conservative value and say you're going to do six houses per year. And so if we were doing mathematics out in representing what could happen in a TIF, that's what City Council would see in terms of some representation. That's not to sell, say that they couldn't sell 12 houses or more in a year. It's simply to say, what is a reasonable number to go ahead and put out there? Are we assuming each home only has one car? No, we're not assuming each. That each home has got a two-car garage. Is there a situation where somebody can have three cars? Yes, are they, that's no different than if I buy the house next to your house and I have four cars. I mean, I'm going to have to live to deal with that. We don't have requirements in our city that say you're only allowed to have two cars. So we do have standards and codes that we've established. And what a developer or anybody else, when they come and look at buying a piece of property, what they rely on is, what are your rules? What do the rules say? And am I following those rules? So if somebody wanted to buy that industrial property today and put an industrial use on it and have 120 employees and 50 trucks a day coming in and out of that property, there is no zoning requirement that puts them in front of any board in the city of Berwyn. They would have the legal right to go ahead and do that. So what else can happen on the industrial piece of property? I can't speak to that. Now, if the, the school district would like to buy the property or if the city or the park district would like to buy the property, it's been there for many years as an available piece for the community to consider. But every elected official has a responsibility to look at their own, the fiduciary responsibility of what can the community afford? And they prioritize accordingly. And I can only imagine, because that has not occurred today, that this piece of property has not been touched by those governmental units. And we have a private sector party that says, hey, I like this idea, the market supports it. I'd like to go ahead and move forward with it. Would you consider this application? The developer's not trying to cram this down the community's throat. He's going through a process that's defined. Our process in this community says, we have a public hearing. Now, I, I understand folks would like greater outreach and more outreach. And we can always go ahead and ascertain what that might be and write that into a code to say. But under statute, state statutes, there are minimum standards that have to be met, and you can go above that. But that's up to the locality to do. And what we're simply doing at this time, my responsibility is really an agent of the city of Berwyn to go ahead and process this particular paper. I am neither for nor against it. My responsibility is to present this report and to provide the information to you. So are we removing Baseball Alley? I heard that two or three times. We're not removing Baseball Alley. Baseball Alley, in fact, would be modified to enjoy a sidewalk along its eastern edge so that it would go from the alley to the north to Freedom Middle School to the south. How does the city zoning work? What is the public notice process? Can we change the process to communicate better? Again, we do have a prescribed process. If you want to go ahead and walk through it, Ms.
Yeah, the process is in the code for members of the public, and that's what this body follows. Since Berwyn is home rule, it can set its own processes that's different from what is mandated by the Illinois Municipal Code. And Berwyn has elected to do that in a couple key respects. So for example, map amendments. There's a request here included in this whole application for a map amendment from industrial to R1. In, under the municipal code, those would go initially before a zoning or planning commission. Here, the public hearing will be held at the city council level because they view map amendments as a policy matter rather than a quasi-juridical matter where you take evidence. What something is to be zoned is considered a policy planning measure rather than one where the specific evidence of a, of a particular property are at issue. So the city council deals directly with map amendments. They're relevant here because we aren't going to grant, we aren't going to recommend a PUD approval if that's the way this is viewed, unless the properties are one. So that will all happen at the city council level. We don't deal with subdivisions. Basically, our purview, our, our main purview and the main things we deal with are variations and special use requests.
So the next question was, why didn't the city acquire the property? Asking the wrong person. That person's not in the room. That would be City Council itself. And I think there was some confusion that this body was the school district from some of the comments that were made. This is a, this is a non-elected board. This is an appointed board that's in front of us right now that dedicate their time and service to our community to listen to the pros and cons of every development and to make recommendation for city councils. So they are not the school district. They are independent individuals of our community, serving the community as part of this political process.
And Mr. Hulseburg, you've had representatives not only of the developer but of the school district, including their council in meetings where you've been discussing what they want for this project. Is that correct?
I have. And if there was a thought that this development was not moving forward in a, in some sort of positive fashion, then we would not be here today. But that's not to say that they, that they're going to approve the document. Until that body takes that action, it's not approved.
Understood.
Where are all the people going to park? Again, this is a repetitive question that came up. Yes, there's only parking on the street for X number of additional cars. Maybe that's nine or 10 additional cars on the street. There's the ability to go ahead and have two parking spots in your garage. I know people that fill their garage. They're going to have an additional problem. They're going to have to deal with their car. The school district has a very informal policy at all of its schools that the local neighbors can go ahead and use their parking. That's already been talked about here, that those 28 spots could be used by the neighborhood as well when the school is not using them. How will the BDC ensure surrounding residents will not be displaced from this development? This argument or discussion of gentrification is a real one. My staff and I have it all the time. You are introducing a higher rung in the housing market. Does that have the ability to influence other homes around it to say they're more valuable now? Could that push values up? Yes, it could. So I can't, you know, stand here honestly in front of you and say that it's going to push out the existing people. I would think they're already there. What it may choose to do is inflate values and maybe not as many people of that like value are going to move in because that person sold at a higher value. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Would the city go through a racial equity impact analysis to determine racial impact? I'm not exactly sure what that study would look like. But if the city wanted us to entertain something like that, that would be up to, for City Council to say, hey, we think it's important. You know, maybe we want to go to the Oak Park model of saying that we want to keep a racial equity mix in our various neighborhoods to a certain percentage. That's something the city could always adopt an ordinance and go ahead and say, if they want to consider keeping racially, present racially balanced communities the way they are or some other sort of model. As a home rule community, we have the capability of doing that. I want to go to one other point about infrastructure. And then I think that will close to the points that I heard. And that was that these 29 homes are going to require more infrastructure than an industrial building next door. Depending on how that industrial building is used, it could be an absolute falsehood. If you had something that was doing a processing or an extruding process that was using water as a filament, as a filament, you're talking night and day. The industrial use could very much more use water than what twenty-nine single-family homes could. Let's recall the detention issue. Right now, that property represents ninety-six thousand square feet of impervious area, meaning hardtop, where water cannot penetrate through. There is no stormwater detention for that ninety-six thousand square feet of area today.
And that's because at the time it was built, there were no requirements.
That's correct.
Now, the MWRD has strict requirements.
The MWRD, in fact, is one of the largest water reclamation districts, and the STICME plan is one of the largest in the world. And the code requirements that we have for structural engineering design of these type of devices is top-notch. So, we, this development, one can very clearly say, is actually improving the stormwater detention issue without, within the neighborhood, by now providing more stormwater detention for that ninety-six thousand square feet than ever previously existed. Again, in terms of water usage on twenty-nine single-family homes and sewer uses, the tertiary capacity, it's miniscule.
What about the combined sewer issue with new development? Is that an issue? Will these houses take storm drainage and run it into the sanitary sewers?
This, this project has gone through the public works department, and from a preliminary, preliminary basis, there was no finding that there was a concern on the infrastructure. There's a concern, actually, that, you know, what the city would like to do down the road is talk about some other additional improvements to Ridgeland for water use. But that's, again, an issue of maintaining pipes and enhancing pipes. I think I covered all the questions. I thank you, this board, for your time, your energy, and your commitment to our community.
Thank you. Okay, we are ready for commission questions. We need to keep this process moving. So, let's do that. We can start with Ms. Norden, unless you're not ready.
Yeah, can I pass?
Sure.
Have to look at my notes and see.
Sure. Let's go to Mr. Walega.
We'll go to the other.
One in doubt.
All right. I just want to thank the BDC for all their work that they put in, not only on something like this this evening, but all the other variances and projects that come before this commission. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's been a big help.
Absolutely.
A lot of my questions have been answered, but I still have a few outstanding. The triangle parking lot that will be part of school district one hundred, who is, I, I know the applicant is going to build the water retention, but who is actually going to build the parking lot itself? The pavement, the striping, the curbing, things like that?
That's up to discussion and debate. There's a proposal that it could be built by the developer and then paid for by the TIF.
Okay.
Again, since that's not a defined activity, that's a proposal that's out there. That would then, again, be an additional value to the school district. So, some of the things that we're talking about as benefits that could happen to the school district, for that parking lot, detention for the parking lot, that quick value there for the stormwater detention, and then that would quick number two.
Okay.
Yeah, the land acquisition and the detention involved, somewhere about a hundred thousand dollars right there. The parking lot is about another hundred thousand dollars in value.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And one more question. You mentioned the twenty-five-foot setback on the homes, but I'm seeing a ten-foot setback along the homes, along Ridgeland Avenue. Is that just because of the nature of the, the lot size? It's a smaller or less deeper lot?
No, those would have to be fifteen foot.
Okay.
This plan sort of just came into us today, so.
Okay. All right, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Yeah, these, so just to be clear, Mr. Hulsbury, these possible locations of the houses, they aren't on the plat of subdivision, are they?
Correct.
Because I've seen that. There are communities where I've seen subdivision plats, where the location of the footprint of the buildings are part of the subdivision. It's crazy, but then you have to, like, do a re-subdivision in order to put the house slightly in a different place, even if it's within the code.
Yeah, you will typically find that out in DuPage County, but not generally in Cook.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Walega, sorry.
No, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Let's go to Mr. Miller. Let's work our way across.
That funny piece of triangle where the cars would be parked for the school. How big of an area actually is that? Let's just give me an idea, like, how many cars would be able to park?
Twenty-eight stalls, eleven thousand square feet.
Twenty-eight stalls, eleven thousand square feet, okay. And if that triangle was not given to the school, was there ever a proposal or a rendering made by the developer to incorporate that and use all of them?
Actually, the developer was extremely respectful that, when that request came forward of saying that that was a community desire for the school district, he said yes immediately and did not entertain any options of anything else.
No options.
To reconfigure anything.
So, they did not configure anything from that?
Correct.
I was just curious that if they were able to use that, and, and I don't know if this would come into play, and be able to put that alley, instead of encroaching or getting that easement from the school to use this part of the alley, where that alley would continue, let's say, straight from baseball alley on the west to Ridgeland Avenue on the east, would let's say a privacy fence or something like that, in other words, blocking the school off, in other words?
Yeah, so.
Or is it a private, like?
So, functionally, what we'd have is a similar situation to what exists today. There's a fence there. I think there's a chain link fence, as I recall.
Okay.
And you have basically a private drive that's going for the industrial area.
Right.
Next to it, you have the, the school access drive, which is typically a very bad situation. You don't want two drives side by side, especially when it could have that amount of density of an industrial use going back and forth. So, when I spoke to the school district, they said, right now, they put special crossing guards out at that location already because of the concern of getting students across that area. And so, there would be no different than, to them today, in having one shared drive with whatever amount of traffic was coming through that area, with a crossing guard making sure that they safely pass that area. But to answer your point, what I'm hearing you say is, could this plan be redrawn, where you could functionally have an alley and then a school drive?
Exactly. In other words, the school drive would stay as is, or how they're getting in and out of there now, and then behind that, let's say, the fence, that alley would continue.
Clearly.
And still out in Ridge.
Yeah, there was an ability, there, there clearly is an ability that a plan could be created of that fashion. But it was, again, one that we went to the developer and said, that's not in the community interest. We'd rather see a shared drive. It will function better. It will have better traffic control for us. And so, the traffic report that you found at the end of this study, at the end of the hundred and seventy pages there by Tim Dornan, made some, some similar representations of saying, look, this is the best design in this particular scenario for what you're looking to, to attempt to do.
Okay. I don't have any further questions right now.
Let's go to Mr. Bruin. We'll just keep working across.
Yeah, thank you. I have a few questions. I don't know if it wants to answer these, but I'll just put them out there, whether the BDC or the actual applicant would answer. In the purchase contract, I saw that there was an environmental study done, and then there was a, an underground storage tank found. Could somebody please explain what that is, where it is, and what's going to happen to it?
Yes, there is a, an old underground storage tank underneath the existing industrial building there, and that will have to be removed by the developer after the building is demolished, if the project proceeds. And it has to be cleaned up, and you get a no further remediation letter. I don't have the phase, I don't have that report with me, so I don't know exactly where it's at on the property, though. But that's something that has to be addressed, to clean it up.
It'll be cleaned up then to the residential standard, because you're going to have basements there.
Exactly.
Okay, so that would be handled. All right, thank you. So, I wanted to ask about that. And then there was mention of other concerns, and I know you don't have the report, and I don't want to put you at a disadvantage, but
Sure.
Public health is one thing we have to look at. So, what were the other concerns in the environmental report that were mentioned?
It wasn't that clear as to how, you know, if there's been any leakage. But we know that there's a tank, and we've got to get rid of it. So, I, I can't tell, I can't.
Please, thank you.
I read, tank was put on the ground fifty years ago. Obviously, they were using diesel to heat the building. The tank is empty. However, we don't know if there's any polluted area around the tank. We would have to remove it, get NFR, especially for the kids next door. Now, we got kids next door. We got a bended building. What are we doing over here? Any of these kids go out, they eat a piece of dirt, they ain't going to get poisoned, are they? So, I mean, what are we doing now? I think we're doing, actually, favor to the community, clean up the area, make everybody happy. As you said, sir, could a developer put an alley? Yes, I could have put an alley, no problem. But I would want to donate the property to the school. It's twenty-eight parking lots. Alley's wider, everybody's safer. Once these neighbors were to get out on the Ridgeland, it's a busy street. We would, we would cause a big traffic. People come one alley and another alley. Now, we got a one roadway. It's easier to control. That's how I figure.
Okay. So, to summarize, you are going to take care of the environmental issue and remediate it. Okay. Now, you just led into my next question, which was the traffic issue. Now, the, the comments weren't read verbatim, but a lot of residents did send in comments prior to the meeting, and some of it was expressed, the resident comments here, that there's, people are concerned about the traffic and this shared alley. Why don't you just explain to us briefly why that we shouldn't be concerned about that? About the shared alley with schoolchildren and residents?
Yeah, I think that our school district, school district one hundred has had a lot of experience on this particular issue. And I'm sure they're going to have more discussion on that. And if they feel that this is not in their best interest in, in handling the traffic in this particular way, they're not going to go ahead and approve the agreement. So, I think that their, the real trust factor there is with our school district. Secondly, they've got the most experience than anybody at dealing with this kind of thing. You can go ahead and take a look at the report that we provided to you. You can see six schools in district one hundred, all with these alleys, all with, with higher counts of cars that are going ahead and exiting right next to the school as well.
Okay.
If you go to, again, Tim Dorn's report at the end of that hundred and seventy-page document, I think it's the last five or six pages, you'll find his, his comments and recommendation. And then there's always a, a more formal report that can come if there's additional questions for city council.
And in many of these areas, not only is it the alley that adjoins the school that gets that combined traffic, it's the alleys around it, because the people, in order to avoid the intersections, they end up using the neighboring alleys as access points to the, to the alley for drop-offs.
Yeah, in fact, that.
And so, you have, there's, the schools have become experts at putting blockages, and some people have limited access to their own alleys at certain key points during the day, and they just do it.
And that's exactly why you don't see the alley to the north of the development called, which we call the existing alley, have any connection to Twenty-Ninth Street. We didn't create a north-south bridge there, because what we knew would happen is, people would use that alley as a cut-through to get down to the lower alley and into the school.
Okay. Thank you. And another issue that kept, kept coming up, and I just want to clarify it, is the drainage issue. Have, has, as far as like the, the issues this would create, or the extra load this might create on the sewer system and all that, has that been studied, or that will be studied with the MWRD?
Well, the MWRD will look at the, first, the stormwater issue. And clearly, they've already making application for the permits. What wasn't raised is, you know, concern about construction of this project with the school, and how that can happen and when it can happen. So, part of the agreement between the school and the developer is timing on when things can be done, because we don't want to disrupt the school. We know that the middle school is going to have $400,000 worth of work or so to the front of the building coming up over the summer. We also know that the developer has to put this detention basin in first, before any of the project can go ahead and move forward, which is in the back of the property. So, there's a lot of coordination that has to happen. So, that easement and agreement between the, the developer and the school district really speaks to some of those construction components, which I think is very important to note. But then, again, I'll go back to the stormwater issue. Clearly, we are going to be making, or the developer will be making, a much better situation, where ninety-six thousand square feet of impervious area has no stormwater detention to date. That ninety-six thousand square feet plus some will also now in the future have stormwater detention being provided for. And our public works director has represented that, yes, we've got the tertiary capacity, as well as the water capacity for twenty-nine homes at this location.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but permits have to be issued by the MWRD for them to connect these homes into the system. Is that right?
Correct.
And so, that means that permits won't be issued to do that if the storm drainage, or if the sewage issue, the sewer setup is not adequate. Would that also be right?
If there's not existing, or necess, the existing capacity to do such, then that would have to be improved in order to facilitate the same.
Okay, thank you. I was trying to find the right words there with that. All right, that is, I think, all I have.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. LaPietra?
So, I came into this having read some of these concerns, and my main concern was the, the alley and children and having more traffic and cars. But then I heard them say, someone, the development, mentioned that there's only one point of access to the school, and that this is going to create a way for the fire department to come through. And that hit me a little harder than being worried about cars. And I'm just wondering, since we have members of the fire department here, can we ask their opinion on what their thoughts are on this?
Chief Hayes, could you come to the podium, please? Sorry to put you on the spot, but I guess that's where you can.
And Gary's going to miss him, though.
So, our, our concern, our main concern, when we looked at the plans, were, can we safely protect both residents and visitors to that area, and also still protecting the school? And we brought a couple concerns, and they were addressed, and they are available in those plans we see today. So, to answer your question, it is better than what it would have been, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just as, as a mom and having a parent who's a teacher, to hear that there was only one way to get to the school if there was a fire, kind of hit me harder than traffic. So, and then my next question is, I know that that building's been for sale for years. Just wondering, is, is part of the reason it's for sale, is this like a tear-down building? Is there significant problems? Is there a reason it's not selling?
We've looked at this property with a number of industrial users at this point in time. The property owner right now is in arrears and taxes, which makes this property very concerning, because we could get some, somebody coming in and taking the property for back taxes. That's always a concern we have. In fact, the BDC generally looks at property and say, is it going in arrears? Let's pick it up ourselves, so that we can help control it. This has got a, a tax bill of about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. And so, it's not something that we jump on to say, let's go ahead and bail out the situation and get control of it, because it ties up our money, which we try to do on smaller scale, where we can make lots of difference in, on many community, community streets. So, the roof, we know, is shot on this particular building. That's about a four-hundred thousand dollar figure. When somebody else looks at it for a demo and start over, that's probably a three-hundred thousand dollar start point there. So, all that said is, you know, the market has not responded. And when you look at that and say, do you really want an industrial building there in the future? Is that the appropriate land use? I would argue it's not, because only from the, the sense of, I don't know what type of industrial use would go in there, and there are no controls that say, we, they, whoever goes in there as an industrial use has to get approval of the city.
Right, if it's a permitted use.
That's right. If it, if it meets the permitted standards, they get to file, come in and say, I'm opening, I'm opening my doors. So, the bailiwick is, you don't know what you may get. But I hope I answered your question directly.
You did. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all my questions.
Okay, Ms. Norden?
Okay. Mr. Bruin actually asked my question about the underground storage tank, which I was very curious about, when we just addressed the back taxes issue. And those were the And those were the questions that I was looking at, so-
Chairman Kroska?
Thank you for your time.
Okay, well, I just wanna thank you all. I've been-
We got one more.
Oh, one more question. Okay, it's Chairman.
Usually, I forget. Because he's, he's sitting right here, I'm looking out. This time, you forgot, even though I didn't forget.
We've talked of the fire department having access to the building, which is an improvement over what it is now. Snow removal in the last several weeks has been wonderful here in town. They clean out the alleys. I could get my car in and out and curb to curb yesterday. Who, with this homeowners association, how does, who's gonna be cleaning the streets? Who's gonna be sweeping? Who's gonna be snow plowing? Who's gonna do the alleys? Who's gonna pay for this?
Great, that's a wonderful question. So unlike our alley situation at present, where if you've got an alley behind you, it's your job to clean out your portion of the alley, the homeowners association in those small areas, okay, where there is an alley that the HOA is responsible for. So a good example is if you go all the way to the end of Twenty-Ninth Street, that portion that goes south from Twenty-Ninth Street to what will be the school district property with their alley, the school district will cover and be responsible for their alley. They wanna be responsible for it themselves. That way, they ensure that they control their own destiny. The little portion between would be the HOA's responsibility to pay for having it cleaned. Now, they have two options. One, they could contract with the school district and give them a fee for, pay them to do it that, or pay the same contractor that the school is using, or they could hire their own contractor to go ahead and facilitate the same. There's only one other small alley. It's what we call the eastern alley on that particular development plan, and I think there are five homes that take benefit off of that. So the HOA would be responsible for those five or, or that small alley strip.
And we have the houses on the north side of the street with the north alley. Who's gonna do that? Who's responsible for that?
That would be, the responsibility there would be as it is elsewhere in Berwyn, the residents. So the residents that are on the north side of Twenty-Ninth Street would be responsible.
Yeah, okay, north side, yeah.
Yeah. And then the existing neighbors that are north of that same alley would be responsible for the alley that's south of their homes.
Unless, unless the city decided to come through and plow it like they did recently and creates another whole set of problems.
Yeah.
No, it's wonderful.
It depends on how you shovel.
I don't. I'm blessed with a young man who's my neighbor, who does me, the old lady next door to me, she's a little older than I say, call the old lady, and his house, and it's never been a problem. But when it gets that high. Now, street sweeping, who's gonna do that?
That'd be done by the city. So the Twenty-Ninth Street will be handled by the city.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Well, I wanna, again, thank you all for your time. I wanna thank the residents of our community that have come out. I think it's quite impressive for them taking time out of their evening, sharing their concerns, and asking you to listen to them as well. I've been hobbling along here, so that, getting my knee workout from its replacement that I had within this past month, so I'm gonna sit down and, and say thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions from the commission, we've heard public comment, we've heard the response to public comment as well as the answers to the commissioner's questions as part of the hearing. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Norden, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Walega. We're gonna take a roll call on that motion to close. Ms. Norden?
Aye.
Ms. Lepitra?
Aye.
Mr. Bruin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Walega?
Aye.
Chairman Kroska?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The public hearing is closed, which deals with paragraph seven A of our agenda. We now move to paragraph B, which is our own internal discussion and any possible action based on that discussion. Would anyone like to start the discussion?
Yeah, I'll start. The whole idea of the parking in the area. I bought my first home, thirty-eight-hundred block of Scoville. It was a prairie, both sides of the street. The street then was just a gravel path that kids walked down and broke bottles on, things like that. The alley was gravel. Nothing was dedicated. On that block, we had, on my side, if I recall, I was on the east side of the street, I had, there were eight or ten homes, two flats, all two flats. So now we've got twenty homes on one side of the street. Across the street are more two flats, which had to have side drives because there was no alley there. But again, there were ten or twelve buildings on the east, west side of the street, so we got twenty-four homes. So twenty plus twenty-four is-
Forty-four.
Forty-four. Fourteen more than thirty. And a lot of families, two cars. We had a garage, we had two cars. Oof! That's a, he's a great dog, wonderful dog. And it worked out. We had company, we had visitors, we had family. It was a dead-end street, and you'd be surprised at how adept people can get to backing up in reverse three-quarters of a block. It wasn't a problem. It wasn't a problem. It worked out. One thing that didn't happen was, one of the people did not wanna dedicate his alley space to the city, so we had an alley that was, came in from Thirty-Eighth Street to about five or six houses, blockage with a fence across the, the alley. And then the other side came in off a T.
Yeah.
It worked out. It worked out. So, personal experience, I, I've had that house from what? Sixty-three to eighty. And it worked out. I, I think we're making a mountain of mo, to make a mountain out of a molehill with the parking situation there. Enough said.
Anyone else? Comments? Is there a motion?
To close.
Did you want a motion on the, the close comment, or?
No, we, well, we, we close the public hearing, and we're not gonna take a motion. I mean, I guess normally, sometimes on variations, we'll just get a motion and then have discussion on the motion. And then I thought maybe people wanna have a general discussion before we get to a motion, when there wasn't really much. I can, you know, so I, I don't typically take the lead on this, but I'd be able to give my comments, which is that my thought, when I look at this and when I've heard all the testimony today, is that this, this proposal for twenty-nine homes in this particular area, that's basically, on one side, you have a school, and then you have single-family surrounding it with you have the public spaces to the west, is consistent with good planning. I understand that the comprehensive plan, the land use plan, would have to be modified because this was thought of as potentially being open space. But we all know that open space, you know, the, the public comments that deal with what should happen all depend on whether there's money to make it happen. And there's a park district. That park district has a budget. There's a school district. That school district has a budget. The city has a budget. You know, the city has its own limited park issue, but typically, parkland is dealt with by the North Berwyn Park District. The district would be the South Berwyn Park District. If, if they don't take action to deal with these situations, the, the property's private property. And so if someone wants to potentially develop it, they, what do they look at? They look at the zoning, and the developers come in with a colorable plan to try to meet the, the PUD requirements. And in my own opinion, as I look at it, I think they've met them. Is this, is this something that, you know, could this have been a good park? Well, I don't know. You know, but it's, we don't control the land. This, if the city controlled the land, they would own it. But this is private property. The developer has a plan, and I believe the requirements of the PUD have been met here as far as what they have to consider, the traffic, environmental, the water. You know, the, the whole issue of the combined sewer system is a, is, is a larger problem, but I think a lot of it, by dealing with the stormwater, that everything you do to help the stormwater problem helps the combined sewer problem indirectly. So even if you don't increase the size of the sewers, for those properties, they don't send their stormwater into those sanitary sewers or those combined sewers, and they go into the detention and then are dissipated from there, that helps. And, and it helps it, you know, I think, more than it does today where the stormwater is totally unregulated. So I think that's a, that one's a no-brainer for me. That definitely is going to be improved. I think it meets, I think it meets the criteria, and I would vote recommending in favor. But I would recommend in favor adopting all the conditions recommended by the BDC. So, I mean, I'm happy to make that motion.
I can make, Lance, I'll just make that motion. I agree with everything you said. I will make a motion to approve the petitioner's request for a preliminary and final plan for a special use plan development to be located within the I-1, I Industrial District, zoning district at the address commonly known as three thousand South Ridgeland Avenue, Berwyn, Illinois, subject to the conditions stated by the Berwyn Development Corporation in its report.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion on the motion and the second, other than what we've already heard or asked? If not, we'll call the roll. Ms. Norden?
No.
Ms. Lepitra?
Yes.
Mr. Bruin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Walega?
Uh, based on the, you know, density of the plan, I would have to say no.
Mr. Kroska, Chairman Kroska?
Aye.
And I vote, and I vote aye as well. Though it's five to two, which means it's a positive recommendation. Everyone in the room should understand that this commission is only a recommending body. We have no final approval authority over anything as a commission. In our own lives, we, I suppose we have some. But we're a recommending body, and the recommendation to the City Council with a report will go before the City Council at its meeting on April the thirteenth, at eight o'clock. City Council meetings are the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month, and we have to prepare a report, so the report will not be ready for the meeting on March twenty-third, but it will be ready to be considered by the City Council at its meeting on April the thirteenth at eight P.M.
Then maybe subject to an earlier call, to give the City Council more time since we saw so many residents, so-
Oh, an earlier City, oh, so watch your agenda. So would that, so let me ask, because I know they typically have a committee of the whole at seven. Would they convert that to a special meeting then, or?
It would be my advice to the mayor, but certainly it would be a purview of the City Council, whatever action they wanna take.
Okay.
And we've heard a lot of residents that would like to speak on the issue, so I would encourage-
Okay, so, just so everyone knows, the, the consideration of this may occur earlier than the normal eight o'clock meeting, but that would be posted as a special meeting. There's a standing Committee of the Whole meeting at seven, the second and fourth Tuesday, so the council's used to gathering then to deal with items without taking action on them. But that could be converted to a special meeting of the City Council to consider this proposal. So watch your, watch your, watch your city website and any postings and social media, I guess, too. All right. We have addressed that issue. We have no new business. Is there any public comment that is not on this issue, generally speaking? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Mr. Walega? Mr. Miller? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. We stand adjourned at nine oh three P.M. Thank you, everyone.
Uh, just a quick question, anything in the future?
There's nothing pending, although there's a possible setback variation on Riverside Drive coming up on what, I don't know what kinda structure it is, but the application's not in, so-
Not in yet, okay.
I don't know. So whether we'll meet the third week of April or not, I don't know because it's still a little early, and that application might, might be in. Very good. All right.